All right, um, call this meeting to order at four o'clock. We are going to open up the public input period at this point per RSA one eight nine seven four. And let's start with, does anybody have anything, public input, go start us?
Hi, Bob Nygrello, pine woods road, select board member. We had a, a parent come and talk to us about safety in crossing South Road. And they have a couple of children in that neighborhood terrace, terrace lane. And they mentioned the fact that cars don't slow down, even though we have it posted at twenty miles an hour. There've been a couple of instances where they've almost gotten hit. So, select board, because it's our road, is going to explore putting in a crosswalk. But we don't want to do that without coordination with the school board to determine that it's in the right place and that we don't put it in the middle of the parking lot. So, our plan is to come up with the regulations and the guidelines, et cetera, of putting in a crosswalk and then determine where there might be a couple of spots where it would make sense. And then come back or in coordination with your board, say, does this make sense? So that's my first piece of public input. Any, any comments, anything I should take, take back to the select board on this?
Personally, I think it's great.
Okay.
But yeah, making sure it's on the right spot. Sure you would have input on that?
Yeah, I'm just, just thinking, just quickly, you know, across Andrews Lane, coming from this corner of the school and then across South Road over near the Tuckney's house. And, and then we're coming out of the parking lot near the fire lane across the street.
Well, maybe at some point, there's a piece of paper and math.
Yeah.
Your, your parents' concern was a terrace lane, though, right?
Yeah, terrace lane, there were also some comments about, well, what about Andrews Lane? So the way we left it was, one, select board members don't know anything about putting in a crosswalk. You know, we've, we've all looked at some, we've all said, okay, this, this looks nice. But what are the, what are the exact regulations that we have to do to make it official? So that when someone sees a crosswalk, they have to stop and let any pedestrians go. That was the first thing. Then the other ones, well, do we need two? Do we need one? Is this an accommodation? So rather than make any rash decisions, it was, okay, we need our road agent, town engineer, and the school board. And we can certainly coordinate and say, okay, what, what makes sense? So that's the, that's the view. School ends tomorrow. We said, you know, this is gonna happen this year, but we got a couple of months to try and figure this out and hopefully get it implemented by September.
Just a comment, Brandon, you have a wonderful voice, but if you could speak up a little bit, we could understand you better.
My only comment was the other community members that need to be a part of this kind of space, right? And you mentioned the road agent, the town engineers, police officers, people who might have, have some valuable information as we put this together. So that was my only comment.
Yeah, yeah. A team together to drive, do it right, yes.
I personally witnessed that family having trouble crossing there, like just driving into school and or walking over myself.
People drive like maniacs on that road.
They do, yes, they do.
There will be a radar sign move from another part of town off to South Road. But it's gonna be further down, yeah. So that was my first thing. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. My other question is, putting the crosswalk there, but also putting a light that blinks when people were crossing? It's just one of the precautions we have at other schools that allow people to know when it's flashing that it's a twenty mile an hour zone and people are crossing. I don't know, you need multiple lights.
We have two already.
You do have two already?
We have two already, yes.
Okay.
One seems a bit, I don't pay attention, however, but they flash. That was my first thing. Second thing is a little more involved. School board, selectmen's office, town hall, and recreation department. Pickleball, lots and lots of people playing pickleball. Great recreation, not a lot of physical activity. As we look around the town, we don't have a lot of hard court around asphalt. And the school certainly has more asphalt than any other facility we have in town. So, I'm here to say, could it make sense for the town to put up some lines on a portion of the school parking lot? And in coordination with the recreation department, say, you know, when we don't have games, because if you have a game, certainly don't want anybody out there other than the parents, because it gets pretty full out there, and any other school activity, that recreation department could put up the net and have some pickleball time. The area that we're thinking is, I'm thinking is right out here where it's the most level, kind of those where the basketball courts used to be and you moved them up a little bit. The general spacing is about twenty feet wide by forty-four feet deep. Give or take a couple of feet if you wanted to outline and give a little more space. Ideally, two courts would be great, one court, okay. But I realize there's a lot of things that would have to happen. You would have to call PrimeX to say, hey, what happens if? You know, what is the liability? We have the same insurance carrier, so we certainly understand that. We certainly understand that the school has a lot of activities here. And certainly tying up a parking lot for a couple of hours is not ideal unless it's not being used. Certainly recreation department has the same kinds of issues. So again, it would take some coordination to say, does this make sense? If it does, when could we do it? And I'm, I realize that it certainly wouldn't be every day. It might be two days a week or something that would fit. So the second one is more of a request to say, again, how could we utilize those three departments or so to say, hey, can we do this? And does it make sense for us? We don't offer a lot of recreation to town. Recreation does a great job with the kids, really nothing for adults. Many years, we had stuff going on in the multipurpose room. We don't do that anymore. So can we find a spot to do that, especially on a, on a sport, for our older residents? And we have many, many, many older residents, as you all know. And it would certainly, I think, have some more interactions between the older residents and the school. So on that, I'll certainly take comments.
So twenty by forty?
Twenty by forty, yeah, I got some layouts. You know, certainly striping and things of that nature would have to come through the town recreation department. They got a lot of monitors.
Are the closest pickleball courts Exeter?
Actually Kingston.
Okay.
Kingston built one, over by Kingston Lake. They also have an indoor court. Our original plan was for the town hall, the old town hall. We're actually having some renovations done. And we thought that maybe we could do it indoors. But that is not going to be anytime soon. Those renovations, those beams, the dollars to do that are two, three, four, five years ago. So when that, that door closed, we're looking for other doors to open.
Have you surveyed the community as how many people might be willing to play pickleball? Like who's, how many people are we serving here?
We, we have mentioned this at the March election. And there were many people who said, oh, I play here and I play there. Hey, let me know, that would be great. I wouldn't have to go to Portsmouth, Exeter, Kingston, you know, get online, you know. We're not members in all, any of those towns. So there did seem to be interest in. One of our selectmen plays two or three nights a week. And I will nominate him to be the coordinator of this. Figure I would come on, on another subject, he didn't have to show up. So again, it's really, you know, more for the community and to expand the recreation department. Think we have a recreation department member here?
I don't, yes.
So now I don't have to go to their.
No. All right, um, personally would like to see it explored.
If at some point in time, we want to meet out here and just mark off some space, we'd have to do that, just to see where.
Are you thinking summertime or would this?
Yeah, I'm thinking it's, you know, spring, summer, fall.
Okay.
Max, you know, someone gonna play out there at twenty degrees?
No.
Probably not.
But that might be my.
So, and even if we started very small, you know, three or four months, and then see what the interest level is, because you're right, if there's no, no one interested, then why do it? Okay, so we spend some money and we try and, you know, try to get community to gather a little bit.
I'm with exploring it, being an ex tennis player, so this is right up my alley. However, my understanding is that a lot of people play like nine, ten, eleven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And we're at recess. So I'm not like, I guess I would like to explore other places to possibly put the courts during this.
Probably not during the school year.
Exactly, now we're taking away a lot of time from the people who might want to do it, that's all.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, yeah.
So.
This would have to be, not to interfere with the school and recreation. Because you already have, you know, you have the school and you have two very good established programs.
Yeah, but in summer, summer's gonna be wide open, time wise.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. And then again, if it's forty, fifty, sixty people, then, then maybe the town, maybe we would say, okay, we want to do something else to expand this. Maybe not here, but at least it started here as a pilot program.
All right.
All right, so we'll do some follow up and as we get more organized on the crosswalks, we'll let you know, bring you in, say, here's what we're thinking. And then maybe we can just go out there after some cool ends and just mark some areas off to see if it even makes sense.
Yeah.
Luke?
Brandon and I in on both of those.
Would you like me to ask our insurance carrier about any liability pieces from PrimeX and get that information to you?
Okay. I think also what I would like to, Brandon, is your input on it, because you're the one that kind of organizes when community groups are using this space. So I, I guess like what would the window be, like, because there's softball practice.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of any recreational activities around here. I, I, I think there would have to be, you know, a specific protocol of when it will be used, who's gonna be setting up the net, who's gonna be taking down the net, where that's gonna be stored and all that good thing. So the exploring piece and really developing a specific protocol is gonna be important.
Yeah, then we should probably get, if it looks like it's gonna go forward, get one involved.
Yeah, right now, Brian Wall and I generally coordinate recreation stuff with what's going around here. We just need to make it a little more formal.
Well, thank you for your time.
Excellent. Any other public input? I think you got your hand up. Actually, you know what? Look, let's go first.
A quick question for Brandon. I know in a previous meeting, you had mentioned that we needed a reading curriculum for the older kids because a lot of the OG approach uses decoding strategies. Have you guys decided on a reading curriculum for next year yet?
We're gonna continue with OG, it's gonna move up to three, which it's intended for. When our new curriculum director comes on board, July first, that's kind of one of our first things we're gonna be talking about as we take a look at the program.
And just so we've got the record, please state your name and address.
Angela Pittman, Burns, Monfort.
Feels odd speaking from the center, so apologies. My name's Anthony Pansioke, I'm the director of childcare services, Southern District YMCA. I'm just here to say thank you to the board and community members that have invested time, effort, and just all of their resources into our program this year. That partnership has been critical. We were fortunate to reopen about a year and a half ago now, which is really important for us to make sure that, you know, our community, which is the sea coast for us at the Southern District YMCA, has access to affordable and reliable childcare. Throughout this year, we were able to serve over thirty students, which means over four thousand healthy meals that were served. And a lot of that is also thanks to our partnership with Brandon and with East Kingston Elementary and the partnership that makes it possible to hold our program in a space. And that partnership also is that we don't necessarily have to pay for that space for those hours. It allows us to keep our costs down for families and it also allows us to provide over twenty thousand dollars of financial assistance to our families per year, to make sure that we're not just a program for those that can afford us, right? We're a program for all that need childcare. So that's all that I wanted to say, I just wanted to say thank you for the partnership and everything that's been invested into our program. And just, I look forward to working together going forward.
Well, I'll speak as a parent, I am so grateful that you're here. I was so thrilled that you opened up.
That's great to hear, we're happy to be here.
Thrilled, my kid doesn't want to leave because she's in the program, so.
A lot of times we pretend like we don't like that, but when they don't want to leave, I mean, it's for doing something right.
Something really good, that's right, yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Okay, are there any announcements? Oh, and, um, public input will stay open, so if anybody needs to say anything, just, just let us know. Okay, uh, Molly?
Okay, so some of our financials, uh, the benefits, I mean, so if you can send us those, that would be great. And then your board pack is a current year financial. So we did have some expenses since last month, about twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars that was added or incurred. I did list what makes that up. So some of it was based off of changes in student need and special education. The tuition came in for some of our preschoolers. We had, we relieved some expenses in the operations of plant, that's for incumbents adjustments on your utilities. And then we had a change in the benefits where we added one trust into our health insurance bonus. Now you'll see, we do have the trust reimbursements, which I touched base with our friend Ted about. It is actually two, we did it in two parts. So those would be the last two trust reimbursements to add up exactly to the ninety thousand that was approved in February-ish, February. And so with the extra sources of revenue, the projected ending fund balance would be about sixty-six thousand.
Did anyone have any questions?
Molly, I have a question.
Sure.
So the eighty-four fifty for specialized services for instruction.
Sure.
On that line item, instruction, specialized services for instruction. So we're kind of like overspending that line item and I didn't know, I thought that if it was over five thousand dollars on a line item, that you needed to order people.
No, we've never operated with that. So we can over expend lines, it's if you want to switch budget. So like, let's just say, which we don't typically do. When we create a budget, we want to manage to that budget and how well we plan for that budget. So at the end of the year, what happens is the auditors come in and they ask, okay, why did you over expend this and under expend that? So really, what we're held to is the appropriated amount, which is the very bottom line.
Okay, so there's never been like a certain amount, you spend over five or ten on a line item?
No.
Okay.
So that's only if we make a conscious decision to make a budget transfer. And we typically try not to do that, because we always want to measure against the original budget line.
Um, I have a, I have a question, and this is more tutelage for me than than anything else. But under food service, it has two thousand six hundred and twenty-one, that's projected loss.
Yep, so.
Explain that to me.
Sure, so food service is a standard one fund.
Okay.
And so at the end of the year, the food service fund can't be recognized. So, and I do have a whole food service worksheet I could send to you if you'd like. And, uh, so the food service fund has revenue coming in and there's three different revenue sources. There's the federal aid, the state aid, and what the parents pay. And then we have the expenses, the expenses of food, the napkins, the forks, the health insurance and the salaries of the people that work in the kitchen. Anything that repair and maintenance within the kitchen. Those are the expenses. And so when the revenue is less than the expenses, which is very typical for a small school like this, it creates a loss.
Okay.
And so you can't have that loss sitting in your food service fund. It has to be transferred to the general fund. But accounting rules don't let me just move expense. What it says is you have to keep the expense in your gen, in the food service fund, but you have to raise the revenue. And in order to do that, I have to do an offsetting expense in the, in the general fund to make it net zero. It's accounting rules, how I know.
I've been asking these questions.
So bottom line, in layman's terms, you know, is it a real loss or we have the money to pay it? It's just that it has to be shifted.
So it's part of the appropriation, so if you look in the food service fund, you'll see the food service fund is overspent by four thousand dollars. But the loss is the loss because it's the amount of expense less than revenue.
Okay.
So I did actually a whole food service write-up before you joined the board. I could send to you, I sent to you all the previous board members a while ago, but I can find that and send that to you.
Well, again, it's, it's tutelage for me, right? It just allows me to understand how things are moved and.
Yeah.
So sure, it'll be like summer reading.
It's, it's just a one pager.
Oh, even better. And Molly?
Sure.
Thank you. Just a quick question on, on the request that, for withdrawal. I think you're gonna need that by the end of the month, right?
Well, we don't have to have the cash by the end of the month, we, we can put the accounting entry in ourselves.
Okay, well.
It would be nice.
I will try and get it to you.
It would be nice to have it, but, um.
I don't see any reason why not, but I just wanted to know for sure if that is a requirement.
It would be nice, but yeah, that'd be awesome.
We'll try and be nice back.
Thank you.
Kristen, it looks like you actually were on that email.
Oh, good, oh.
I didn't know I was on the emails, I'm gonna feel bad.
Okay.
But it's, it's in your email somewhere.
Right, perfect.
So I won't send it, but if you have any questions after you look back on it, let me, thank you, Molly.
Molly, I have another question.
Sure.
For the additional funds that we're paying our parents for when they have to, you know, cover for a classroom teacher?
Yes.
What line item were those funds being pulled out?
So we, unless they're filling out a separate time card for that, it would just dump from their regular salary.
They're filling out a separate time card.
They are filling out a separate time card?
Yeah.
So in that case, I just have to look to see exactly what line they're charging to. They might, it might be being charged to the substitute line?
It's, I, I don't know, that's my guess, because of the separate time cards.
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at the time card.
Okay, because I just think as a board, we might have to discuss, like, are we gonna be doing that for the next year? You know, because that won't expire unless we make a motion to do so. So I just think that's something that we should look into, like, how much have we spent so far since we made that motion today?
Okay.
I don't know if that, if there's a total or running total.
I, I'll have to go back and I'll have to look it up, but I can certainly send you an email with that information.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Mm-hmm.
Are the parents receiving? Or if they're covering for a class, they're receiving a stipend or some type of compensation? Are they receiving a compensation on their lunch break or on a time that they were not scheduled to be in their other regular classroom time?
So they're, they're covering either a full or half day increments for a certified teacher, so it's either ways or classroom.
It's like a substitute, you're actually going in for substitution, okay.
I mean, the, the sub shortage, of course, is well known, right? So in order to make that work, you know, we just, we made that move following our winter timeframe. You know, we started talking about that because we, it was an everyday occurrence, yeah.
I just wanted, in my head, how it was all working.
Yep, completely understand, thank you.
I believe it was eighty dollars for a full day additional and forty dollars for a half day.
Additional onto there, right, okay, thank you.
So how often is that occurring, like, is it still like a weekly thing that we're short on stuff or is it better with that?
No, we're not, we're still putting it in the frontline, Karen's main office is making home calls. Weekly, it's, it's actually weekly, yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
So I'll be sure to get back to you on the subs.
Thanks, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Superintendent's report.
All right, um, just a few updates. We had a beautiful graduation at Exeter High School last Saturday. The sun came out just as the last row of students were getting their diplomas, it was good like that.
That was nice and prompt and sweet, it was very nice.
Mrs. Monahan does do a nice job of running a tight, tight show there. You will, everyone will receive their last superintendent report from Dr. Ryan tomorrow, it will be going out. It's filled with lots of celebrations of student learning, end of year. On that note, the transition planning, I think, has gone really smoothly. We've had plenty of meetings, I've seen your leadership, so I'm excited to start my new role with you. And I, I feel like the senior leadership going into the summer, we have some dates set up for our own retreats, planning PD and workshops for administrators and a three-day retreat with the administrators. So the summer is packed for senior leadership, so we are around if you, if you need anything. And then I emailed you all this morning, we got a letter of resignation last night. And then there's a nomination to hire, so I will be asking for action on both of those items. When we, when we get a chance, and if you do want to talk about either the nomination to hire or the resignation, we can go into, to non-public and do that. And that's really all I have, are you, do you have questions for me?
Um. Do you guys want to discuss either of those or do we want to put it to a vote?
I had questions on the new hire, so.
You want to do that at the end, we can go into non-public?
Yeah, I mean, some of them are public questions and then some are non-public, so whatever you want to do.
Let's do it, yeah.
Do that, okay.
All right. Uh, do you have anything else?
That was it for me. Oh, it is on the agenda later on, but I did want to talk about moving the meeting date next year or setting a calendar for next year.
Okay.
And also I think later down on the agenda is a request by Dr. Esbel to be able to hire over this summer for East Kingston, especially since that resignation came in last night and she will need to fill that position.
Okay. Let's work on all that.
Okay.
All right, um, approval minutes.
I almost did not have an edit.
I have an edit.
But I almost did not, but then I saw one. So on the first listed approved policies in Andy's motion should be E B C G, not E C B J. That's all I had.
My edit is a typo. It's Erica De Lucia, not Erica Davis.
All right, make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And that was public and non-public?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Um, I think you did have like two motions, motions to accept public and not.
All right, let's try that again. Make a motion to accept the public board minutes as amended.
And the non-public.
And the non-public.
Meeting minutes, based on.
Unamended.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Alright.
Mr. French.
Thank you. Uh, uh, just included on this last one, we have twenty, twenty students that they are expecting here for kindergarten in the fall. I wrote the numbers. They stayed the same for the last couple, uh, months compared to what the students. Uh, we had our activity day and family barbecue last Friday. Amazingly, it didn't rain until the last garbage can was wheeled into the school.
I.
Could believe that. A very successful time. Um, and we had over, uh, we had around three hundred and fifty, uh, students, teachers, staff and families, um, participating in the family barbecue, which was amazing. Uh, it was amazing turnout, so we're really happy about that. Uh, we wanna thank, uh, Mr. Bean for all the work he put into facilitating activity day. Uh, Mrs. uh, Ford in our kitchen and Ms. George in our kitchen for all the work they did to, um, prep the food and all of our parents and volunteers, um, that were either participating at activity day itself or, um, serving food at, at, uh, at the barbecue. It was a wonderful event. Uh, we also had our spring festival, uh, at the end of May where it was, uh, we were led to, uh, a wonderful evening of art, poetry and music, uh, throughout our building inside and out. A special thank you to our theme team, um, led by Mr. Stevens, uh, Mrs. Schuster and Ms. Smith and the students on our theme team, uh, our music teacher, Mr. Kay and our, our teacher, Ms. Bastille for the art show. Uh, I do want to, uh, review our, uh, spring data. I'm gonna bring it up to the screen so you can all see. I had this on. So while it's loading back up, just as a reminder, this is, you know, one of our first years in, in a while that we've collected lots of data. Um, behavior data, um, academic data, both reading, writing and math. And, uh, it was, it's been a lot of work. Uh, Mrs. Schuster was here representing her intervention team, Ms. Taton, um, our, her math interventionist and classroom teachers, um, really put a lot into this, um, through our TSS work that we've done, our PLC times we've had together. So, we have three data, essential data in both reading, writing and math and talked about it in the fall. And in the, uh, in the winter, we saw some great growth that you'll see K to two, um, in both reading and math. Things we're really excited about, all the work that our K two teachers have done, uh, with the York Illinois entry that they received as well as our special ed staff and our interventionists. And we've also seen great growth, K to two in our math, um, that you'll see upcoming here. What I have here is, is our school-wide data. And, um, oh, I just, I didn't wanna forget this part. Talked about the parents earlier. Our fall open house, well, we had a hundred thirty more families at the time. We had a hundred fifteen families participate in our fall open house. Our fall student head conferences, a hundred twenty-two, a hundred thirty families participated. And then again, uh, in, in April, we had a hundred twenty-five families participate in our spring conferences, which the percentages are, are pretty phenomenal. And we're really excited about that, that the students are leading the charge there. Um, so this is our school-wide fall math day that, uh, that we presented back in, I think, November timeframe. Uh, we had sixty, uh, sorry, seventy-seven, seventy-seven percent of our students that were meeting or extending their learning. In the winter, uh, we, we popped up to, uh, seventy-four percent. Uh, we were trying to get the, those kids out of the yellow, which was happening. We had a dip as we moved into the spring. And we're not sure of the reasons why of the dip yet, as we take a closer look at the data. Uh, we did have a drop from. This might be a little easier for you to see. We did have a drop and we, we had some of our kids bump up into the extended learning, which we're really excited about. So going from the green to the blue was something really proud of. Because of that, we did have a drop in our green, uh, which were meeting expectations. And, uh, these are the parts that, that we're focusing on now. Uh, we feel really comfortable with our tier one instruction, but it's those kids that are in the tier two, tier three areas that we are gonna really take a harder look at as we come back in the fall to see really where we're missing, uh, or what are we missing. Uh, part of our approach is going to be really focusing on the math PD that we've done. Just thinking about the reading, the last two years, we've had a lot of focus on our reading and we're seeing the benefits of that. So now we're gonna make that shift based on the data that we've collected over this last year, start making those shifts into the math area, especially at the three to five level. Again, not sure what happened with the dip, but, uh, we are recognizing that there was one and taking our knowledge and the data that we have to drive that PD for our staff in that specific math area.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you said this is your school-wide data.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the K through two, reading wise, and we've seen significant growth throughout the year. Can you separate the K two and the three, five for math or no?
It is separated. It's, it's not separate on this presentation. I can, I can pull it up when I sit back down.
Okay, the, the reason I asked that question is because, um, having professional learning for three, five, if, if actually the skill set isn't solidified in K two, we can't move to three, five, right? Um, so I just wanted to see what the numbers were in K two so that we're not creating switch cheese or trying to.
We're solidifying K two. We're, we're doing great work, K two across the board in both reading and math.
So now it's.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this was our fall reading data. Um, it, it's probably easier to see when everything's on that one screen, so I can just quickly go through this. Uh, we were, uh, thirty-five point seven percent meeting and the twenty-seven, I'm sorry, the eleven point six percent extending. We saw a great increase again, uh, from fall to winter, and we saw another positive increase, uh, from the winter to spring. Again, this is much easier to see just looking at all three sets of data. Again, our, our work with the K two students and OG, you know, really brought our, our school-wide scores up and, um, our, our third grade teacher next year with our current kid, sorry, our current second grade students bumping up to third grade. Um, we have our teachers taking that comprehensive OG training that will be in third and fourth grade next year. So that's which cheese you're talking about. It's not gonna be there because they're gonna be getting it right in third grade. And with our new curriculum director comes on, we'll start having those conversations on how we wanna take a look at our four fives and how we're gonna intertwine that with the OG work that we've done so far in the last few years. Uh, so yeah, we're, we're, we're really proud of our reading data school-wide and it's, it's just gonna get better and better and better as our K two students continue to move up into the three, five. Any questions on reading right now? Okay, I'm gonna come back and sit down and then I'll be able to talk more about the, um, splitting of K two and three, five. Alright, uh, looking at our math data. Our math data, K to two. Um, it's easier, if it's easier for me to just kinda read, um, where we're sitting right now. Uh, in the fall, our K two students, uh, three percent of our students, um, were in the red, uh, below. Fifty percent were approaching, sixty-two percent were meeting and twenty percent were in the blue extending. Uh, now, as we take a look at the spring, we still have three, three percent of our students in, in, in the red, which is the below area. We have dropped fifteen percent of our students from approaching to five percent. Um, sixty-two percent of our students in the fall were meeting expectations. That has dropped to forty-four percent. However, uh, in, in the fall, twenty percent of our students were extending. And we now have forty-eight percent of our K two students that are in, in the extending. So ninety-two percent of our, of our K through two students are meeting or exceeding expectations, um, agree level expectations compared to the eighty-two percent in the fall. As you take a look at the three, five, again, it's, it's, um, it's, uh, we didn't see the growth that we were hoping to see. Uh, but again, we, we do have the data to support, uh, where we wanna move forward from there. In the fall, we had twelve percent of our students, um, in third through fifth grade, uh, below, uh, grade level. Uh, in the spring, it's nineteen percent. Uh, we have sixteen percent of our students in the fall that were approaching grade level expectations.
Say that again, Brandon, I'm sorry.
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. Uh, in the spring, it's twenty-two percent of our students. Fifty-seven percent of our third through fifth grade students were meeting expectations. That is forty-one percent. And, uh, in the fall, eight, sorry, sixteen again percent of our students were meeting ex, were extending their learning and were at eighteen percent. So we did see a dip in some of our third through fifth grade students from the fall to the spring.
And the math assessment is strictly I-Ready?
Uh, I-Ready, AMES Web.
Okay, so does both still?
And, um, another, uh, small assessment on EZCBM, the three data points that we used.
And who administers the AMES Web? Is it just the tier two?
Uh, Mrs. Taton and, and for math and Mrs. Schuster for reading.
For reading, so it's tier, tier two.
We, we, we are actually moving away from AMES Web. We, we weren't happy with it. And we weren't, um. It, it wasn't providing our teachers enough.
Diagnostic.
Yeah, to really drive their instruction. So we're moving to something, um, that many districts around are using called Acadians next year, so it'll be new for our staff. But again, it'll be Mrs. Taton and Mrs. Schuster will be administering that. I-Ready's done in the classroom.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So Acadians is gonna take the place of ANGELA?
Yeah.
For math?
For math, yeah. And, and, and for reading.
And?
Yeah. AMES Web was our, was our K to five benchmark for reading at the school-wide.
I guess my question would be, does I-Ready math, like, recommend using another, like, using Acadians or is it just not using, like, all their diagnostic, diagnostics or, or like a good measure?
Well, there, there's only one diagnostic, which is the, there's no other diagnostics through I-Ready. It's just that.
Okay.
Uh, but to get true valid data, we, we wanted to compare that to other data points. And we, we tried to get three, three data points to really compare the, the true data. Yeah.
EZCBM, Acadians, and R-Ready.
Yeah.
And then what about for reading? Um, Acadians?
Acadians and I-Ready. Uh, and then depending on the grade level, um, our K to twos will use OG. Our kindergartners will use, uh, a program called Hagerty. Uh, we used to use a, a program called PALS, but they no longer are gonna, PALS is going away, so we're not gonna have access to that. But within, Kristen jumped in there.
You're doing a great job.
Did I forget anything?
No, no, you're doing a great job.
Okay, okay.
Cool.
Yeah.
Um, so for Acadians, are the tier two teachers getting, uh, professional learning on how to administer that correctly?
That is something they will, that will be happening, yes.
So, um, another question I have, Brandon, is, uh, what is scheduled for professional development for next, the next school year? Uh, what do you plan to do, I guess? Like, after the, the report and kind of the direction?
To take a harder look at the data now that it's complete and figure out what areas would need depending on the specific domains we're hoping shortly, you know, like, an example, as I-Ready will give us a certain score on each, uh, specific domain. If we're really poor in, you know, geometry or something, then we can take that data and use that to run that instruction. And, and I, I keep, I keep saying when I do, when our, our new curriculum director comes on board, but when she does come on board, so at first, that'll be part of those conversations that we have early on and how are we gonna use her skill set, um, and her knowledge and expertise at the K to five level, which is what she's experienced in. Um, and I know the SAU's focus for her was out in the smaller schools that don't have curriculum coordinators in the building, so she will be, uh, a big part of the discussion and kind of what we're doing. She will be attending her K two or three, five PLCs and having those conversations. She will be in classrooms, working with teachers. So that, that'll be an ongoing thing. It's not just gonna be upfront. It's gonna be ongoing for the year.
So I, I've asked this question before and I'm just gonna ask it again to put it out there. So eighteen percent of your kids are below average in reading. That had, that has not shifted through their practice with OG throughout fall, winter and spring. So for those kiddos who are not absorbing OG as an instructional method, they're not grasping that space. What other programs or what other instructional methods are you looking at? And, and I'm not looking for an actual, like, specific answer, Brandon. I just think it's something that needs to come up. You made tremendous growth with those kiddos in OG, but somehow these eighteen percent, you know, which is a small number of kids for a school of only a hundred and thirty. But they still need to be serviced correctly and they still need to be learning how to read. So what are we gonna, again, hypothetically, what are we gonna do about it? Uh, because those eighteen percent still need to learn how to read.
And the only point I would make from a specialist standpoint, we compare those students to themselves and what does their learning growth look like for them? So if they went from a non-reader to a year and a half of growth, but still not in the eighteen percent, that student had a lot of growth that year. So we wanna make sure when we talk about students with learning disabilities and other, um, disabilities under IDEA, that we compare them to themselves and what their learning growth looks like. Um, just in reference to, we want a hundred percent of our students to be meeting grade level expectations. Um, but sometimes students with varying needs, that takes longer than a year to for us to get them to where they need to go and which is why we have ESY services and extended year services for those students.
Okay, that's. The other question I had too is, um, the state assessment.
Yes.
Without, do you have it already or?
We don't have that till, it's not finalized till the fall, so that fall meeting in November will have everything else. Yeah.
I thought I remembered it coming home with the students at the end of the year.
Individual reports come home.
Individual.
Yeah, but, uh, the finalized state reports that are public are not till the fall.
Okay, alright.
So tomorrow, it should be coming home.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anything else? Uh, no, that's it.
Alright. Uh, did you do, uh, what, how many we have coming in for kindergarten?
So there's twenty. You expect some more in the summer. That's usually the way, maybe, you know, just a couple more. That's usually the way it happens.
Okay. Alright, um, so on to chairs report. So board committee assignments. We'll start with a superintendent evaluation. Um, we need to discuss potential goals for, uh, Dr. Azbell. Alright. If you guys have any feedback, um, when we talk later, um, that would be a good time to do that. Um, but that is also gonna be on our, our agenda for next week, I think, as meeting the twenty-first. Wow, that sounds great. Um, and then, uh, wrapping up goals for, uh, Dr. Ryan as well. That is going to be something that we will discuss later. Alright, um, that's about all I got for that. Tiffany, what you got for us?
Policy committee. So there are a few less policies than we had last month. So I'm gonna go through them really quickly and then I'll, um, stop at the end and see if you have any questions. So policy EBV, school safety program, it's a new policy. EBV is an overarching policy that defines policies required or recommended in a comprehensive school safety program. The SAU, um, has worked through many of the policies listed in EBV this year. And it's a great resource that will direct you to school safety policies. So I guess if you're, um, you know, a parent or guardian and you're on there, you can go to EBV and it'll kind of direct you to a bunch of other safety policies. So it's just overarching. Uh, policy code GADA, employment references and verification. This is their review revision. And it had a few small edits for us, cause we already had adopted the policy. And this policy fulfills a requirement, um, of ESSO. The section, that section is intended to decrease the risk that persons who have engaged in sexual misconduct while with, at one school are able to, are able to obtain employment at another school without the second school ever learning of the prior misconduct. The law does not prohibit transmission of administrative personnel files. Bus school employees, agents, et cetera, prohibited from taking any other act which assists the employee in obtaining new employment. Sorry, I don't know if that loaded your question?
What are they saying?
So basically, they're saying that, the policy states that you, there's a guideline, uh, basically you cannot, you know, recommend somebody that is like, I guess, let me pull up the policy, sorry, I don't wanna misquote it. Um, Dr. Bennett, do you?
Yeah, I have it.
Um, let me pull it out.
We're talking, we're talking about EBV, right?
Um, G-A-D-A.
Oh.
We want our much G-A-D-A, right?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Isn't it, it's like an H, it's an HR policy.
It is.
It's an HR policy that.
For reference checks.
Yeah, for reference checks. That if they have had a misconduct
Yep, yes.
in one school, you need to disclose that in another school.
Okay, that's what I was, I was making sure that it was saying you have to disclose.
You have to, my understanding is that you have to disclose it for the safety of the kids that they're going to now work with in the next school.
Okay, I, I assume that.
Is that correct?
I didn't.
I don't wanna misspeak, but.
I was reading over your shoulder.
It's been charged, put it otherwise. Yep, if there were, yep.
Okay, alright, we're good.
Cut that out pretty quick. So J-C-A is Change of Class or School Assignment Best Interest in Manifest Hardship. So this is a new policy, or I'd say a merger. The old version of model policy J-C-A concerned only reassignments based on the best interest standard. While manifest educational hardships reassignments were addressed in sample policy J-E-C, each of the former policies reflected different processes. House Bill thirteen twenty-eight made best interest and manifest hardship processes sequential rather than separate. The New Hampshire School Boards Association has merged the two processes into policy J-C-A. J-E-C is now recommended to be withdrawn. Revisions to this policy took place in twenty twenty-one to align with amendments in House Bill HB three eight eight, which, one, expanded allowable best interest and manifest hardship reassignments to include approved private schools irrespective of whether secretarial, and two, added language clarifying that if denial of the manifest hardship assignment is based upon a child's disability complaint may be filed with the New Hampshire Human Rights Commission. And so, we would be withdrawing policy J-E-C in that. Policy J-I-C-I, Dangerous Weapons on School Property, this is a revision, the last revision was in two thousand and three. Uh, New Hampshire School Boards Association updated this policy back in two thirteen, two thousand and thirteen by separating the text of this policy into two headings. One relative to guns and firearms and the other relative to other weapons as defined in this policy. The updated language clarifies the Federal Gun Free Zone School Act and how it's intended to apply only to the students. Added language under the other weapons provisions established standards of conduct for students and makes a distinction from those standards for adults. You have any questions on that one? Alright, the ones I just went over?
So tha- that particular piece is, the policy is for students not having guns in school?
Yes.
The adults in the school fall under a different policy? Or they don't have a policy about having guns in schools?
Well, there's, there's no weapons permitted in school buildings, on school property, or school vehicles, at school-sponsored activity or events.
Period.
Period.
Adult, children?
Yep. Just specified children.
That is not the way I interpret that, interpreted that, um, let me go to the policy. So in the policy itself, it says, uh, okay, so it says members of the public who violate this policy may be reported to local law enforcement authorities. If possession of a weapon is used in a threatening, harassing, or intimidating manner, the superintendent or other building administrator may exercise their best judgment and determine the scope of this policy as it relates to inadvertent or unintentional violations by adults. Providing such inadvertent or unintentional violations of this policy does not affect the safety of students, school, staff, or the public.
So, I mean, I understood it, it, like, two parts, there's the guns and firearms for students, which is the first part of the policy. And then the second part of the policy is sort of redefining weapons and if the school board wanted to pass a policy that we didn't allow weapons on schools, during school-sponsored events by parents, adults, community members. Um, so I, that's how I sort of understood.
Yeah, I guess I'm just hung up, applies only to students, that's where I'm hung up. So is there, so I just wanna be umbrellaed under other, um, space, do you understand what I'm saying, like it says firearms only to students?
I didn't understand it that way for.
Yeah.
Okay, updated language clarifies that Federal Gun Free Schools Act and how it is intended to apply only to students.
Yeah, and I think I might be, the policy that comes after this, K-F-A, like clarifies
Oh, okay.
it a little bit better, so I think maybe by reading them all, yeah.
Okay, one more one. Yep.
You guys?
Yep.
That's fine.
No, no, don't be sorry, good.
So K-F-A is Conduct on School Property, and this is a new policy. So the N-H-S-V-A states that the impetus for revisions new to S-A-U sixteen to the model policy was the twenty twenty-two passenger House Bill eleven seventy-eight, now codified as RSA Chapter one fifty-nine dash eight. Among, among other things, the statute precludes state or local public agencies, subdivisions, or their employees from enforcing any federal law, regulation, or executive orders that are inconsistent with New Hampshire state law pertaining to firearms, ammunition, or knives. As New Hampshire does not have a law that specifically prohibits non-students from carrying firearms on school property, the policy required revision to the previous provision against weapons on school grounds. Students are prohibited from possessing or using firearms on school property by virtue of RSA one ninety-three colon one three. Instead, this policy prohibits the use, as well as the reckless, attempted and threatened use of any object, et cetera, to injure, intimidate, harass, or force another person. So, that's, K-F-A is where that is stated, I was looking at the wrong one. Does that help?
I think the purpose of the policy is that we don't have a law in New Hampshire that matches a federal prohibiting adult weapons and firearms in school. So the point of the policy was, we have a law that says students can't, and we have, and there's a policy in that. I thought the purpose of the policies were that we would have a policy against weapons being present during school-sponsored activities in our buildings.
Right, yes, but again, it just states students on the, um, even on the K-F-A. So I'm just looking for anyone who walks into the building, they should not have a firearm or a weapon, period.
It's, again, no person on district property shall during any school-sponsored activities or approved activity may, and then it lists, it was really, I didn't take it as just students. I, I took it as members of the community.
Members, right, anyone.
Are you on K-F-A?
I was, I was juggling between the K-F-A and the J-I-C-I.
So if we have that, then we have it, and that's wonderful, but I just don't want anyone walking through that with a weapon.
Right.
Yeah, I kind of thrown me a curveball here, but I don't think that New Hampshire, you know, the New Hampshire state law supersedes what we could do here, I don't think that we could implement that.
We could have a policy, we, we have policies that prohibit things on school activities.
We have, but we just can't, we still have to follow the law though, we still have to follow the New Hampshire state law.
Right.
New Hampshire has a law that prevents you from, say, from having gun free zones.
I couldn't hear what you just said, Andy.
I don't think New Hampshire has a law that prevents you from making gun free zones as a, as, at a, at a.
We can, yeah, we're not, I don't think we're breaking any law by having this policy, because there's no law saying we can't have a policy preventing firearms on school activities. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we would have to talk to legal on this and look at the state, New Hampshire state law a little deeper, because in that policy meeting, it's my understanding, um, that it is, that it's for students and that it was a separation of students and other, and others.
So, let me ask this clarifying question, or let me give a scenario and see if we can. So if we have a activity on school grounds and, um, a parent comes in with a concealed weapon, that's allowed?
That's not my understanding.
So, it is allowed, it's just that if, if they are acting in a manner that is reckless, threatening, then we would handle it at that point, the way we would handle any other situation.
In my conversations with Chief LePage, as it comes, comes to when we're a voting station, that it's allowed in our building.
Okay, it's not a school-sponsored activity.
But, that's the only time that it, this is just conversations with him, but.
That's the only time?
That's the only time a gun should ever be in this building or on this property, is during a voting.
And when school is shut down, because kids are not here?
As long as it's not a school-sponsored activity or event, it's just a public building.
That's the, that's the distinction and purpose of the policy.
But if there's a question for legal, I'm happy to ask it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the policies as they're in, okay, how they're interpreted, uh, you know, after reading through them and being on the policy, but I guess it's just different interpretations in the realm of like what the policy means. So I guess maybe we could just get some clarification.
Okay, so you want clarification from HR, you want me to reach out to Eric from the school board?
Um.
I'm happy to do both.
Yeah, I mean.
I just, the que, the question for me is, I understand that they're stating students and that's, we don't want any students
Yep.
having anything, you know, especially in K-five.
Right, right.
Um, however, my, my question is, are they only, in, in this policy, are they only speaking to, about the student? And anyone coming on school grounds could have possibly a weapon, as long as they're not acting in those particular terms?
Yep.
Okay.
There's a federal law that says you can't have a gun within a thousand feet of an elementary or secondary school.
Yes, um.
There's no New Hampshire law.
But in the policy K-F-A, it's stating that, um, New Hampshire state law pertaining to firearms, ammunition, knives, it's basically saying the statute includes state or local public agencies. So I feel like it would be our state, it would be like our state law, and I believe that the way our law is written, um, is how I'm interpreting the policies, is that, um, you know, anyone that's not a student would, or, um, a staff would be able to, but that's, like I said, that's just the law. I'm happy to get clarification.
Andy, just a, a scenario that I hope is covered by one of or both of those policies, and that would be, heaven forbid, in an emergency situation in our school. I don't care if it's a police officer or a civilian that's trained in firearms, to resolve that situation must not be forbidden.
Yes.
I imagine any legal action would be bypassed at that point.
That is in here, Ted, as a, yes, it's in, um, it's in one, it's either in K-F-A or J-I-C-I, one or the other, that we're kind of melting together, but, yeah.
And law enforcement's allowed to keep their guns.
Yes, yep.
And they do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, did you get through more?
Yeah, so that was all of them. And the other thing that I wanted to mention too, we got sidetracked, was, um, policy K-B. It was in our agenda, but we, that doesn't pertain to us, we are actually not a Title One school. That, that policy is Title One Family and Community Engage, Engagement, so we don't receive the funds, so we don't meet that policy. I mean, if we were ever to.
If that changed.
Then we would review that policy again.
Alright, make a motion to approve the policies listed except for K-B.
Paul's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, safety and security, we have not met since the last meeting, so I have no update there. Community engagement is by screen.
Um, we met. Um, we met and there were three of, four of us, four of us, um, fabulous, maybe I was the fifth that joined in. Um, some of it was intro, in introductions to me, being new to, um, that board and just who people were and, um, what my role was and what I do for a living. Um, we talked a little bit about creating some, um, opportunities for, um, the public to be part of East King's Elementary School through different avenues and venues. One of the suggestions that came up was creating a table or, um, some type of, um, opportunity during the farmers markets that will happen, um, in, on June eighteenth. I'm not sure where that went, but we talked about creating, um, just having a table there, maybe having some kids represent different things that they were doing, having a couple of teachers there if they were willing, maybe school board members, just, just to be able to meet and greet and ask questions, uh, just to be, maybe putting up some art. So that, that might be something that's in the works, um, for the following summer. Um, we also talked about some other engaging activities, which I thought the pickleball was a great, um, space, uh, for, for some of those conversations to have. We meet four times, four times during the year. So, I, I'm, I'm definitely thrilled to be on that, so I, I hope that I can be of service, I guess, uh, in that space, um, so, thanks, Brandon, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
And then S-A-U Wellness?
Um, S-A-U Wellness met in May and that was their last meeting, and I think I did an update, um, in May when, when we met. So we did get, uh, email stating our four meetings for next year, we start in October, so I would be participating in that starting in October.
Good. Uh, goal updates?
Um, so, other than what Brandon spoke about, um, I don't have anything to update on my goal.
Community engagement, uh, just did. I'm definitely, I will say this, um, I am definitely open to, um, over the summer, meeting with folks, maybe at the library for conversation about what people might want, um, for community engagement. That's, that's an easy win for everybody, just to, to have a conversation. So, that in itself is community engagement, maybe I may work with Zoe, um, on, on setting that up and, um, I'd be happy to do that a couple of times over summer.
Set up for a newsletter?
Newsletter, yeah.
Alright, I, no, no updates on mine, so, I'll see you after that. Alright, um, any old business?
I have one thing, I just wanted to see if we could add to the agenda for September, the S-A-U sixteen Joint Board Communications and Community Engagement Committee that I, um, am on. So it's not on here, and we will meet in September, so it can probably most likely be for a meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Can we drop the email?
Yeah, thank you. Let me make sure we have that on.
Okay, um, new business. You wanna discuss Cursive and Math Facts, correct?
Yes, yeah, so that state law, um, passed, uh, House Bill, and starting next year, kids will have to learn Cursive and Math Facts by the end of fifth grade. So I just didn't know if we knew what curriculum we'd be using for that.
We don't know yet, I mean, Math Facts is part of, we do already, we're right now, so, that's something we already touched on.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, of the Cursive, uh, we begin, um, to discuss the different programs of our current kindergartners and first and second, they, they use the O-G handwriting program right now.
Oh, yes.
Um, so there there's other ones that are all due century, like Handwriting Without Tears is another one that teachers are familiar with, who've worked in other schools in the past, so. Uh, it it it'll be solidified over the summer, and we'll be coming back in September with a specific program.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just add, iReady is changing or adding a piece of the interface for just math, rules, and fact drills for students to do. So that's another, yeah, iReady's updating on this assumption, it would just be additional layer to what we already have in our curriculum.
Yes.
Yes. Can I ask you, oh, weird question, I don't know if it's K five space, but it could be for the teachers. I'm curious about um, AI and um, how it might be implemented into the curriculum as a way to create this uh, digital citizenship. I don't know that we need to talk about it right this second, but at some point I would like to talk about AI and um, how it's going to be integrated in, and obviously through di- digital citizenship, but uh, I just think it's worth a conversation at some point.
So I have been asked to um, have you all consider moving the East Kingston School Board meeting to the first Tuesday of the month or the second Monday of the month. Um, because there's already another school board meeting on this date. And the superintendent was wondering if we'd consider moving it. Um, so that if there's, it doesn't drain um, Molly in terms of having to go to two school board, school board meetings in one night, which is fine right now because they're at four, but when we go back to our five o'clock time, then financials have to be split, if we wanted the superintendent, who Dr. Aswell wants to come to some of these meetings. So it's just something to consider, if we could move it, move our meeting days to either the first Tuesday or the second Monday, because those are the only days that don't have school board meetings.
I'd rather do Tuesdays.
Okay.
To get us off preference.
Um, I have a preference in meeting to uh, towards the second Monday of the month, but, do you?
I I don't, I don't have a preference as long as it's on my calendar, then I'll show up, if it's not on my calendar.
I don't feel asked for that.
You want to do the second Monday of the month, okay.
The only caveat would be, I think there's two holidays that fall on the second Monday of the month, we would just, when I, I'll send a draft calendar to you. We would just not meet on those Mondays, we'd meet on the Tuesday, or a different day that week, because we would have to have a meeting. But I think if you look at the calendar, that's only two holidays over the course of next year that fall on a Monday. So if you wanna do that Monday, I will come up with a draft calendar and send that out to Andy.
And then the only other thing that I would probably add to that is right now, we're pretty consistently getting our board packet on Friday for Wednesday's meeting.
Okay.
And I still would actually prefer a little bit more time than that, but like if we're getting, you know, having a meeting on Monday, couldn't get it on Friday, it's like, yeah.
Right, fair enough, that's true, yeah. So that could change in preparation. Okay, I'll, we'll, we can shoot for a week prior, maybe it might be Tuesday sometimes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I also put a request in just to take a look at the calendar, I'm trying really hard not to have it on the last week of school, of our last meeting, it's it's a lot. So, if we can.
I second that.
Open up a week, um, that would be one.
In general, is that the same call?
Right, yeah, yeah, so last week of school is um very heavy.
Um. Okay. Did you finish that?
Alright.
Um, you were looking for action with regards to?
Um, so, action to accept a resignation.
Yep.
Um, we'd regret if the board was able to do that, or we can go into non-public and talk about it, and then action to accept a nomination to hire. Or we can go into non-public and discuss that, and come out in our public, and make those motions, it's up to the board.
With regards to the resignation, do you guys have any, resigning's going to be open for discussion?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
Um, are we allowed to state the name?
After you make a motion to accept it, I think you could say, yeah, so, yeah, you can.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the letter of resignation. All in favor?
Where are you?
All in favor? Um, I'd like to uh, wish uh, Ms. Ward a uh, good endeavor on her future endeavors.
Excellent.
She will be greatly, greatly, greatly missed.
Thank you.
Very sorry to hear that, it sounds like wonderful.
Yeah, yes.
Um, and then I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, SEU office to hire over the summer.
Do you wanna put an end date on that, like any hiring occurring before August thirty first, Dr. Aswell has the authority to, or?
About before our next school year?
So I just had a question on that, so I think, you know, we did this last summer too. And I just wanted to make sure that as long as a board member is sitting on that hiring committee and approves out the candidate, right? Can we still be included into that?
Board members could accept nominations, but they don't, and they're part of interview committees and have discussions, but they, they don't veto veto hiring.
Cause right. Right. Yeah. Well, yeah, like I mean, it isn't.
You're asking if we, one of us could be on the hiring committee for whoever's being hired?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that like, if she's hiring over the summer, that one of us is included into that interview process.
Yes, an interview is definitely different than a hiring committee though.
Oh, what did I say? Oh, okay, yeah, whatever, it's, you know, I guess basically I just want the same procedure, you know, that we're doing now, just.
But it just. Sure.
So. So there's two things, a motion to authorize Dr. Aswell to hire over the summer for any vacancies.
Yes.
But if if the board takes action on that, great, and then we will maintain the current procedure, which is we invite a school board member on to participate in all of our interview committees.
Okay, awesome.
I wouldn't want to hold up hiring or interviewing if someone couldn't be on it, cause in the summer, interview committees shrink.
Right. Right.
Like that, for a variety of reasons, so I don't want that to be a reason why we couldn't hold an interview. But we, we absolutely, we absolutely maintaining what standard procedures that East Kingston has, which is we invite school board members to interview committees all the time.
Brandon's on that.
Yeah, yeah, Brandon runs it, so.
Okay, so I'll second Andy's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um. And then while we're at it, do we need to go into non-public to discuss the uh, acceptance, is that right, for which here? On the nomination higher?
Um, I would like to, I would like to go into non-public for that, Andy, but do we wanna do, do we wanna save it for the very end, do this first?
Okay, so you wanna go in non-public?
Yes.
Okay, then, then we'll do that. Alright, so in that case, um, the ADTF reporting protocol discussion. This would be what you would like to discuss.
Jonathan?
The um.
Um.
Your concerns that you had with regards to the DEIJ report.
So you. Okay, so our agenda was updated, and so, our agenda was updated.
That's sneak attack.
You gone and done on there.
So sorry, he is talking about G, which is this. ADTF um, reporting protocol discussion.
So, so we went to the, we went to our joint board meeting and we, it was presented to us, the DEIJ um, that we were gonna go through a protocol training on that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, and you wrote my questions down?
Yes.
I am thrilled by that. Um, so my first question, which has been answered between now and then, but I'll state it anyway for the sake of clarification, is how does this get uh, implemented through curriculum and through instruction here at a K five level? Because a lot of what they talk about is in the high school space.
Yes.
And and I find that um, it really does need to be talked about, I guess, in a K five curriculum. Um, and I think that Ms. Tool is taking that on, and so I did learn that um, she did present to us as at the school board, um. And so I, I find it interesting that it's only the school counselor that's doing it. And so I wanted to see how that ripple effect was happening. If if she's the anchor, how is she training other teachers here at the school, right? So how does that ripple effect happen? Um, and the language that's being used and the expectations of our kids, right? Because most of it, accessibility, inclusion, um, the ability to have um, compassion and understanding. And if that's where we're at, I'm good, in that particular space. Um, and I seem to get that from Ms. Tool, that she was engaged on the committee one, which I was very happy about, because sometimes we go to committees and we're just part of a committee, um, but I didn't get that feeling from her at all. So that question actually was relieved for me, I felt that I had an answer. Um, and then my second question is more of an HR kind of SAU question. So we have a Title Nine Coordinator, we must.
Yeah, and Lariska.
Um, and so, how does that differ from what the Director of DEIJ does? In the sense of that's an educational space, whereas the Title Nine Coordinator is taking the complaints and going through the processes of that? Are they one and the same?
No, 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 and the answer is very big, um, so.
No, okay. Okay, sorry.
So first, I would welcome you to come in and have a conversation with Andres, Anne or Ellen, and like all anytime in the summer, because I think they can answer a lot of your questions, I may not get to tonight.
Okay.
So there's a few pieces, at the joint board, um, the DEIJ director went over the last two years of work, he he's been working as a DEI director, which was one piece of that. And then when he talked about the um, ADTF, which is Anti-Discriminated Task Force, that came out of a law that came out in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen around preventing discrimination in a school, and then we have the policy AC. So policy AC talks about the need to come up with a task force or a plan to track discrimination in your school. Look for root causes, how do you respond in a plan for following up in a disciplined way for discrimination? So it kinda just follows the same outline of our bullying policy, but it's under if someone is discriminated for um, ableism, sexism, creed, gender, like that sort of pieces, so that, so I just wanna break out a two thing, the DEIJ presentation was a little bit different at the joint board. It got meshed into a protocol that facilitates something that's in a law, that also comes from our policy AC, which is how admin will follow up on if someone reports they were discriminated based on one of the following reasons.
So, that was awesome, thank you, the the piece that I was getting confused about is most Title Nine people follow up through those policies of discrimination?
Yeah.
And so the Director of DEIJ isn't doing that, the Title Nine person is doing that?
The title, the the phrase.
And Brandon, do we have a, sorry, do we have a Title Nine person here?
Yeah.
There you go.
That would be me.
At number twenty. Okay, right, right, but, so that, I guess that that explanation helps me a lot, because again, I was putting the Director of DEIJ more in the educational instructional theory space.
Yeah.
But then Title Nine is the processing space of apparently a policy AC.
Well, AC talks about discrimination. Title Nine, it has some really, it meets Title Nine requirement, has some really specific language, which we can, I should have memorized, but I don't pull out. And then the um, AC goes a little bit deeper in terms of discrimination, variety of reasons, and sort of um, tracking that and reporting out on that, and if, in having accurate data, the state wanted it on on that, those pieces and stuff like that.
But also the data for um, following, I don't want to use the word consequences, but follow it, to make sure that we have the evidence to back up those spaces.
Exactly, exactly, so, but I mean, this is a really long conversation, so I, I think definitely Ellen and Andres would be perfectly welcome to have those conversations with you, any anytime you want.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, you brought up bullying, um, and to take that one step further. Are there policies that get into threats that are made outside of the school zone? With social media, et cetera?
There's. Um, I would have to go look up, there is, there is some policies, and in the student handbook that discusses social media threats and bullying, that will be um, addressed in a school setting, or if they bleed over into the school, then administrators and other people can intervene. I'm not sure exactly which policies allow, or if we would go to the student handbook to go to. We do, I I know instances where addressing it, um, we're addressing it, I just, what policy, I would, we would look under, I'm not sure yet, but we definitely, when it bleeds in the school, we hear about it and we provide supportive measures for students.
Uh huh. Maybe I need to go look those up, but is there any, is there any guidance as far as notification to other students?
Under Title Nine, there is, under bullying investigation, there is. They're different, and what the, in the scripts and the language that administrators would use would be different.
Okay, um. Alright, so we have two non-public things to discuss.
I just have one other question, sorry, on the uh, ADTF uh, protocol. Brandon, have you seen that document?
Which one?
The ADTF protocol, do you have it?
I don't have it in front of me, but it, we discussed it on our.
Okay, great. Okay.
The administrators will be trained in the fall.
Oh, in the fall, okay, okay, yeah, cause I guess, you know, we got this, I just had a lot of questions and I knew there would be more follow-up.
Yes.
But I guess how would a situation be handled now, like racist or other hateful behavior and language, intentional or unintentional? So if a student or staff experienced racist or other hateful behavior and language, intentional or unintentional, how would that be handled? Like without this protocol, like this, I'm just trying to think, like this protocol just seems a lot for like a K to five level, as far as the age appropriateness, like how we would get it right, and so um, I just didn't know.
Yeah, and it 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 would be part of an investigation, uh, where I'm involved, um, and either Dr. Bennett or Dr. Ryan or whoever's kind of overseeing our school would be involved in that, and depending on kind of where it fell, whether it's bullying or hate more of a, a Title Nine, then that specific person, kind of risk of particular, I would also be involved in that.
Okay, and I I just wanna read, the the protocols will follow very similar to our Title Nine and our bullying protocols and timelines. The point of visit to call it what it is and label it correctly. So is it, it's not just bullying, it was bullying based on ableism, and a child has an IP and is picked on because of their learning disability. It's it's really about breaking down the the behavior into the correct category. And then the response from the building is gonna be age appropriate, I mean, the K through five is very different in terms of page pulling out of her second step curriculum and having a whole class discussion of why these words might be hurtful and considered microaggressions. And and at the high school, it'd be very, it's a different conversation in the counselor's office or the social worker. So the protocol is really more about administrators knowing what to label the behavior, if to label it anything. And um, why we added those categories in Alma, so not all bullying is just bullying, is it bullying based on gender? Is it bullying based, so I think that's the piece. Um, I haven't seen the protocol either, I think the the task force has it, um, and we'll all be trained and have conversations on it in the fall before any administrator will be asked to use it, so.
Okay, yeah, so circle back.
So, so you mentioned Alma, which is our uh, school um, reporting system?
Yeah.
And so if kiddos are being put into Alma with a, with a, a tracking, so Brandon would have to go in and put in there that the kid was talked to about bullying?
We do, we do now.
We do now?
Yeah, but no one, not everyone sees it.
Okay.
Brandon sees it.
The teachers don't see it?
If you go.
Teachers that that, teachers that make the report do.
Okay.
But not every staff, everyone has access to them, and it just comes to me.
Okay. Okay.
And not everything has that same level of permission. As you can imagine, Title IX would have confidential notes in our system, but every teacher would not see that.
Okay.
So there are ways in which Alma, which I need to, I don't use Alma in my level.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
So but I know that we've had lots of conversations about students confidentiality piece.
Yeah, that confidentiality.
And so um I know Dr. Andruski works with Alma a lot, like we, ways in which we'd ensure that only the building administrator would have that information. It would not be something that other teachers would have that as a student.
And at this level, parents would be notified for most of the stuff.
Anything that goes in as like a major into Alma, parents are notified.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you, yeah, if it was going into Alma, it would be notified, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
So did you um say that Paige Tool is the only person from East Kingston on the ADTF?
Yes.
Okay, so, alright, that was one of my questions I had, I just wanted to make sure that I had that in mind, really.
Yeah, and and then how is she, how, I guess, within the school then here, how is she being that that ripple effect to help and train other teachers um in that space, right? Um, that again, I don't know that I wanted to answer, but it's just something to think about, right? If there's only one person, and then you will be trained as an administrator in those protocols, like how do you create a systematic way to teach other people so that there's consistency with kids um and with parents and articulating it effectively? So there aren't misconceptions.
Yep, that's a good point. Thank you.
It is awesome. It's fantastic.
Oh, um, I just have one other thing um for new business after um that discussion. So I wanted to talk about um fifth to sixth grade math placement information. So I missed the fifth grade parent night at CMS, but I was told that um parents could reach out and hopefully I'm not saying this wrong, reach out to Karen Burr over the summer for additional testing for placement for fifth uh for sixth grade. So I just didn't know if I missed an email or that, would that go out to like all the fifth grade parents at some point? Like, should we put it out to them or, you know, put it upon our weekly, interweekly? Because, you know, if you weren't there and you didn't know, like, how would you know to like have your kid tested for sixth grade placement aid? Because, you know, there's uh sixth grade math, there's sixth grade extension, and then there's seventh grade extension math. So it's three different levels that the kids could be placed in.
Were all students assessed, or they use your building level assessment data to place students?
We use our building level assessment to place students. The students have the option of taking a placement test at CMS over the summer if the parents feel that they should be like in the sixth grade extension and not the sixth grade math.
Yes, yeah, so we have building level credentials that I believe would place all of our students in fifth grade, and correct me if I'm wrong, into sixth grade math. But I believe there are some families that would feel um that their students, you know, should be in the sixth grade extension or even potentially seventh grade extension, because the criteria to be able to be in that program was that they had sixth grade math in fifth grade.
So those, I mean, I would suggest those would be the conversations that parents have with the fifth grade teachers.
Okay.
If if they feel that their child, the fifth grade teachers notice that the child can take a placement test at CMS over the summer.
Okay.
So to me, that would be the fifth grade teacher having that conversation with.
Parents.
With the parent, yep.
Okay. And then also too, is there any way that we could circle back, you know, so they come K to five here and then we send them off to the middle school? Is there any way that we could get a breakdown of our fifth grade students as far as who is in um sixth grade math? Not who, like specific ages, but how many are in sixth grade math at the, you know, start of the school year? And how many are in sixth grade extension, and how many are in seventh grade extension? Because I just feel like if those are the programs that they could potentially take, that we should be gearing them up to be able to be into those extended programs.
I'm sure we can aggregate that down where you want it.
Okay, that would be awesome.
I don't know how, but I'm sure they can.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
Um, I think one of the things that you want to look at in that particular case is your track record. If your fifth grade teachers are placing kids and those kids are being successful in those places,
Right.
then your track record is pretty good and we can trust their professional judgment kind of on where they're placing them. We see a lot of this, uh, and it's it's wonderful that parents are eager um to have their child in a particular place. But I'll use my Swiss cheese, to create Swiss cheese at that particular level is not going to be helpful for them when they go into a pre-calculus right now. So I would just, I would be interested in our track record in placing so that we know that we are making the the correct uh
Yes.
placements and using the data that is informing our decisions versus a request based on something that.
Right, going in the same token too, in order to be in the most advanced, in order to get through calculus and statistics at EHS, you have to be in the advanced, you have to be taking algebra as an eighth grader. And if you don't reach that benchmark, then you don't get the full um course classes and that could be you taking um calculus or statistics for like an engineering program like at a freshman college. So it just also sort of like works together, so I'm just trying to, you know, like you said, right? Are are we putting them in and are they successful?
Yep.
And how many are we putting in? This is great data, I think.
And do we know how many people ask for the um testing? Yeah, no?
Yeah, it was just something that was um discussed at the CMS orientation. So I figured I would circle back here, um, and just go from there.
So, you got anything else?
I'm good.
Do you have you public input?
Yep. Quick question, um, you might have passed this along to Kirsten at the May meeting, but did you let her know the intel that we got from the community on Election Day about community involvement and did you guys already have that discussion? No, okay, so we heard from some people in the community when we were selling raffle tickets, but they are very interested in the town newsletter. Um, hearing about what the kids are doing here. So even if they don't have children themselves, um, you know, I don't know if we could take pieces from the X Weekly or stuff from uh when the superintendent puts out his newsletter, but um we heard from a lot of people in the town that they just wanted to see what the kids were doing here and what was happening, and they all tend to read the town newsletter.
And who does that, who's the person in charge of that?
The library Zoe.
Oh, it's Zoe.
Yeah, I think the newsletter.
Cause I think.
That that newsletter is the town newsletter?
That's the only town newsletter.
Yes.
Well, there's a library one and a town one, but I think she's involved, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, but she's involved in both, so talk to Zoe, okay, yeah.
But yeah, but.
Yeah, she has.
Cause they said, trying to get on our website and look up the newsletters, I think navigating the technology was a little bit intimidating.
Okay. Okay.
But they they pick up hard copies, I guess, of the newsletter at the library.
Oh, okay.
And so they said that would be really helpful for community involvement for them to just see what projects some of the kids are working on and, you know, what are we doing here?
Yep, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
So like I said earlier, you know, I'm I'm open to having a few, you know, chats about community, only about community engagement um, like at the library, but I will reach out to Zoe and see, you know, how she and I can work together on that.
Yep.
I'm there every day.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't think we did discuss that.
No, it's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
That's it.
Um, so we are now going to go into a non-public session. A non-public session will be called in accordance with chapter ninety-one, eight, three, dash, two, A. Dismissal, promotion, compensation, disciplining, or investigation of charges of a public employee.
We need a vocal vote to go to non-public.
Alright, make a motion to go into non-public session.
Second.
Andy Harum?
Tiffany? Kirsten's vocal. Okay.
Alright. What is the verbiage that you need?
Just a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination of Heather Harrison, first special education teacher. Harrison, Heather Harrison.
Alright, like a measure mode, make a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination for Ms. Heather J. Harrison.
Second.
All in favor? Open the board, this is Harrison. Alright, I think we're done. Call the meeting adjourned at five fifty PM.